I'd like to call the order, the special meeting of the village board for November 12th, 2019. Can you please join us for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Village Clerk, would you please call the roll?
President D. Simone?
Here.
Trustee Carmona?
Here.
Trustee Franz?
Here.
Trustee Frye?
Here.
Trustee Lomax?
Here.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Here.
Trustee Perez?
Here.
That's seven.
We will now move to the public hearing on the village's 2020 annual budget. The village's annual budget must be adapted before the beginning of the village's fiscal year. The village held two public meetings in October to discuss the proposed annual budget and will now hold a public hearing before considering the adoption of the annual budget. Village Clerk, for the record, would you please call the roll to open the public hearing on the village's 2020 annual budget?
President D. Simone?
Here.
Trustee Carmona?
Here.
Trustee Franz?
Here.
Trustee Frye?
Here.
Trustee Lomax?
Here.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Here.
Trustee Perez?
Here.
That's seven.
The annual budget has been available for public inspection since October 31st, 2019. The 2019 annual budget and community investment program totals $64,592,442. The annual budget is balanced. It includes several infrastructure improvement projects and provides for all pension payment obligations of the village for the next fiscal year. If any person would like to speak on the village's 2020 annual budget, I ask that you please approach the podium, state your name, and comment.
Your Honored Members of the Board, members of the public, this is just for the 2020 annual budget. There will be a time for public comment later in the meeting.
Seeing none for the public comment for the budget, this will conclude public comment on the village's 2020 annual budget. Is there any further discussion on the 2020 annual budget? Is there a motion to close the public hearing on the village's 2020 annual budget?
Do you have a motion?
There are second.
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. The motion carries and the public hearing is closed. We will proceed with the regular order of business on the special meeting agenda. So first off, I'd like to start by, I want to clarify some misinformation about cannabis in the village that may have brought some of the residents to the meeting tonight. Unfortunately, misrepresentations concerning the legalization and sale of cannabis in the village has been spreading. On January 1st, 2020, the state of Illinois's new cannabis law will take effect. The state law will make it legal to buy and sell cannabis in the state of Illinois. In response to this, the village held a public hearing on October 1st and passed zoning laws to prohibit the sale of cannabis in several areas of the village, including all residential neighborhoods and areas around schools, daycare centers, recreational facilities, and parks. The village also imposed business regulations on an establishment that gets a license from the state of Illinois to sell cannabis in the village, including restrictions on the hours of operation and security requirements. The village also passed a tax to be paid by an establishment that gets a license from the state of Illinois to operate in the village. All these requirements are in addition to regulations established by the state of Illinois. While a cannabis-related establishment may try to operate in certain parts of the village, every business will need to obtain a special use permit and will have to come before the Community Development Commission to obtain this approval. By village law, all special uses require a public hearing. From the very beginning, the board made it clear that it wanted public hearings at every step of the process and staff must continue to follow that direction. Most importantly, the village has not received any application for a dispensary or other cannabis-related business. While a few have made inquiries about possible locations, no establishment has filed an application. To date, the Illinois Department of Financial Professional Regulations has approved 14 locations in the entire state. Bensonville is not one of these locations. The village is also not aware that any establishment has filed an application with the state for a location in the village. In closing, to clear up inaccuracies and rumors, and as permitted by law, I am directing village staff to refrain from staff time or village resources on cannabis-related businesses unless required by law and only after the state of Illinois has clarified its rules and provides additional guidance on the issues during the current session in Springfield. With that being said, Sunday and Monday of this past week, I spent time in the community. On Monday, I received an email from a resident that heard these rumors, and after speaking with him for about 10, 15 minutes, I just want to read what he wrote us back. So he emailed us, we contacted him, and he wrote us back. Says, "I wish to express my appreciation to the village and the city manager for taking the time to talk with me today. It was great to find out that what I had heard about the possibility of having a cannabis retail location in Bensonville was not accurate and that this is not the direction of the desire for our community. I believe it will be positive for all of the residents to hear what I heard today. I apologize that I was acting on bad information and I deeply appreciate the responsiveness to my concern. I feel much more at ease now about this. Again, thanks for taking the time to talk with me." So at this time, we will move the public comment. Does anyone wish to address the board? If so, please approach the podium and state your name. Remember, it has a three-minute per person rule with a 30-minute maximum.
Mr. DeMichael is first.
My name is Paul DeMichael. I live at 17W 275 Rodak Lane. There was a saying at my old company, "There's never enough time to do it right the first time, but there's always time to do it over and over and over." I sat through every hearing on the sale of cannabis. The village did pass a text amendment which permits locations to be zoned in certain places for the sale of cannabis. That is indisputable. I was really troubled by the lack of discussion by the board members. At any of the board member meetings that I was present at where this was on the agenda, there was no discussion. People have tried to placate us with saying, "Don't worry about it. We'll..." some legal mumbo jumbo about permitting and licensing, and "We're going to control it this way." But the hard fact is, you're going to allow it. The best reason I heard for this is from the village manager saying, "We're going to get $400,000 a year for this." Wow, you know, this village is for sale. I would like to see a decision like this being made over a broader area than just one person. I really think, and you have the opportunity, to put this on the ballot as a referendum question. Other cities have done this. This gives the whole community a chance to voice their concerns rather than a limited number of people and the rest of the village doesn't know anything about it.
You have one minute.
You need to take your time with this.
Thank you.
Mr. Nylander?
Hi, my name is James Nylander. I'm at 211 Jaclyn, and I'd like to thank the board and president for allowing us to speak. Before I proceed any further, I just want to address a rumor. I did not share the rumor about De Campagna and the Dairy Queen. I live and work in Bensonville and have for many years. I'm a local pastor, chaplain of the police department, and a former mental health counselor. I've worked in psychiatric hospitals, counseling firms, and now do pastoral counseling through the church I pastor. I've worked with many people addicted to all manners of substances and their families, and an addiction is what can rob someone of their normal abilities to cope, reason, work, and have healthy relationships. It causes compulsion, desperation, distorted thinking, risky behavior, tunnel vision. Leaves the person with one goal, more, more. They want to quit. Unfortunately, many times they can't. They promise themselves and others. Time goes on, they unfortunately build up a tolerance and need more for the high. With addiction rates between 9% and 30%, this substance is nothing to toy with. Most conservative estimates put addiction rates for adults with marijuana at 10% and for teens, 17%. I've worked with people addicted to meth and heroin, some prostituting themselves in order to afford the habit. I've worked with people addicted to marijuana. I've worked with people who were sexually molested as children by someone who was using mind and mood-altering substances and lost their inhibitions. But the greatest impact in my life about addiction was what it does to children and teens. I worked as a therapist with children who were put into social services because the state took them away from their families. Those children and teens were heartbroken, their lives are changed forever. Virtually every one of those families had substance abuse addiction. And here's the thing, kids and teens won't show up in addiction reports. They are nameless and faceless victims of addiction, but their lives are forever changed and scarred by it. Children don't know how to access halls of power or call their politicians. They're just trying to survive moment by moment, often trying to find food to eat because parents have spent money on feeding their addiction rather than buying groceries. Kids are trying to understand why mommy and daddy behave the way they do, trying to understand why mommy or daddy behaves meanly or is unresponsive to them when mom or dad is high. Children have no voices with which they can speak to raise awareness. Traumatized, trivialized, and tucked away, hiding in some closet or taken away by DCFS and placed in a shelter they go unheard. Well, I know the stories of hundreds of them, and I'm here to share them with you today because I can speak for them. And here's one of the most painful things, kids of addicts statistically grow up to be addicts. Springfield and corporations who stand to make billions aren't concerned about the well-being of others. They're thinking dollars and cents, profits, Lamborghinis, mansions, whatever. But we on the front lines see something completely opposite. Don't let the promise of money blur your vision into putting a marijuana store in Bensonville. It's people who are important, people matter, and the promises and deception that others share in order to promote their terrible product is just plain wrong. Our own DuPage County Health Department is warning against this and sharing its grave dangers. We do not need a moratorium on this. We do not need more time to deliberate and see how much money we can make. We need a decisive decision to protect our community regardless if other politicians in other areas are willing to protect their towns and desire to put their people at demise. People before profits, safety instead of demise. It's not just about kids and teens. Denver has a consistently growing high rate of violent crimes. They are one of the top out of the top 30 cities. The most recent research shows that Denver's violent crime has risen almost 20% at 18.5%. Their property crimes have risen 10%. Their car thefts, 22%. 45% of teenagers who use marijuana will physically assault their dating partner, which made me think about our first responders. With spiked increase in violent crimes, how would that impact police officers, for example? How would they be jeopardized or even targeted? I have worked with Bensonville officers for a number of years. I volunteer to help them deal with the stressors of their job, the painful things that they see, and the consistent flow of negativity they are confronted with again and again, day in and day out. I worry about them and I pray for them. And my biggest prayer is that they get home each night to their families. I love those officers and I do not want to see them put in harm's way, and a dispensary will greatly increase the odds of them being involved in something which could be detrimental, harmful, or cause them not to make it home. As a member of this town, which I love, live in, and serve, I'm sharing my views and asking you to vote no. Make and ensure that Bensonville is to be free from marijuana stores just like Elmhurst, Arlington Heights, Naperville, Bolingbrook, DuPage County for its unincorporated areas, Lake Forest, Lake Zurich, Libertyville, Park Ridge, Highland Park, Lake Forest, Libertyville, Winnetka, and Glenview, as well as many other towns. And here's the thing, it doesn't matter if somebody's an atheist, agnostic, apostate, or all-in concerning their beliefs about God. We are called to love our neighbors because what is universally true is that what we need to do is love our neighbor, our fellow human beings, protect them, and seek to do right by them and not lead them in a way that could be detrimental for them, their families, or future generations. I have some fact sheets I'd like to share with you. Thank you for your time.
The next one up is Ms. Kathleen Del...
Delapaz.
Delapaz, sorry.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Delapaz. I live at 313 Ridgewood Avenue. And, excuse me, I have been a proud Bensonville resident for almost 30 years. I love to be able... We're a small town, we're a small community. I'm proud to tell people where I live and how I've seen this community grow and develop and the sense of community that we have. And it disappoints me that the values that I've seen throughout the 30 years that I've lived here, that we would even consider this as being a way to generate revenue for our town. It disappoints me that I hear about this from outside sources. I'm on the Bensonville, the Village of Bensonville Facebook site all the time, and I see just, you know, all of the wonderful activities that are going on, the Christmas tree lighting, all of the other things that we have going on for families, because we represent families and we focus on families. Yet there wasn't any information that I saw that would have alerted us that Bensonville was even considering bringing a marijuana distribution center into our town. Whether it's in an industrial area or residential area makes no difference. I don't believe it represents what the community would want, and I think that my first recommendation would be to just revert the decision and stand that we are going to stand for family values, that we're not going to be a town that endorses drug use. And if you're not going to revert that decision, that you properly notify the citizens of this town so that they can be represented, their voices can be heard, and that the vote could be made that represents our town. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it. It's all the sheets that I have. Did anyone else want to speak, or?
Do you have any other speakers? Mary? No? This will conclude public comment. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the October 22nd, 2019 village board meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Are there any modifications to the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries and the minutes are approved. The next item of business is to approve the warrant in the amount of $1,181,697.23. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
So moved.
There's a second on the motion.
Second.
Are there any discussions on the warrant?
Yeah, I'm going to actually recuse myself. I have two items on the expenditure list for reimbursement of deposits made.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
That's five.
The motion carries and the warrant has been approved. There are no items on the consent agenda tonight. Underneath Community and Economic Development, there's an ordinance denying variations to allow a 16-by-9 extension of a driveway parking pad at 15 North Ashby Way, Bensonville, Illinois. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Scott?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Excuse me. This is a single-family detached home, pardon me, the Lee residence in the Heritage Square neighborhood, just up Main Street here. There's two variations that were sought, both dealing with the driveway/parking pad, as they're known in the ordinance now. First, they need to be one foot off the property line, and the second that they really shouldn't extend past the edge of the garage itself. The property in question, the homeowners had a 16-by-9-foot extension built without any permits or proper zoning approvals. We brought it to their attention. Obviously, they came in and applied for the variation. Also, you'll see in the staff report that structurally, the driveway/parking pad does not meet the building code, is two and a half inches thick as opposed to five is required. So should the variations actually be approved and overrule the recommendation of the CDC, they would still need to take this out and rebuild it. The...I should say that the Heritage Square neighborhood, the traditional neighborhood there, does have design guidelines that also don't allow this parking area to be where it is. So the staff had recommended against the both requests, finding that the findings of fact are required of the ordinance were not met by the homeowner, the applicant. The CDC did agree with that recommendation, voted five to nothing the other day to, basically to deny. The motion was made in the affirmative and the motion failed, so it's a recommendation to deny.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Under Finance, there's an ordinance adopting the annual budget for the village of Bensonville for the fiscal year commencing January 1, 2020 and ending December 31, 2020. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion?
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
There's no additional comments to what was made at the beginning of the public hearing. However, we'll answer any questions, if you have any.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Number two is an ordinance adopting the 2019 tax levy for the Village of Bensonville, Pegee, Cook Counties, for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019 and ending December 31, 2019. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Do you have a motion?
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
This is the formal ordinance to adopt the levy for 2019, which will be put on everybody's tax rolls next year and collected. It totals $5,142, which is the same amount that was part of the tax levy estimate that was approved by the board last month.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Number three is a resolution authorizing a contract with Travelers Insurance and other insurance companies for comprehensive liability insurance package effective December 1, 2019. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
I have a second.
There being a motion and a second, is there a discussion?
This is just our annual insurance policy for liability. The rates went up 1%, but that usually is ascribed to the increase in our property values, move up the same amount, so.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Number four is a resolution authorizing the contract with the Illinois Public Risk Fund for Workers' Compensation Insurance effective January 1, 2020 to December 31, 2020. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Typically, when I bring items to you, I always have small increases. I'm proud to deliver a decrease on this one this year, especially in Illinois and workers' comp. So we are joined today by Dane Mall with IPRF, who would like to make a couple statements before we discuss this further.
Hi, Dane Mall with Alliant Insurance Services. I'm your account executive for the village, and thank you for having me today. Just a comment about your workers' compensation insurance with IPRF. I wanted to just personally thank and let the board know how hard staff worked on connecting with IPRF to make that happen and to make that decrease. There was a commitment at the beginning of the year to revitalize certain aspects of the village's safety programs, including safety committees and inspections, safety training, and all of that had to, came together to produce the decrease that you are seeing here. So I think I wanted to commend staff for that and working with us, Alliant, and your insurance carrier, IPRF, to do that. We've actually increased the safety grant amount from $14,000 last year to $19,000 this year as well, so you'll be getting added benefit there. And then also, based on those efforts that you've shown this year, it also makes you eligible for an additional 10% reimbursement for 2020. So we're looking forward to that, too. So that's, those are real dollars, and that isn't just, you know, a quick savings. This is from commitment and sustained commitment on your safety program. So I wanted to commend staff and available for questions.
Yeah, thank you, Dane. So our safety committee, I don't think insurance is ever exciting. It shouldn't be, but it's very nature, but it's probably one of the more exciting things that we're doing right now. Staff has really gotten behind it. We're doing monthly walkthroughs of buildings with checklists to make sure that there's things haven't changed. These safety grants, we've applied to buildings to make our buildings more robust and more safe for drivers. It's been a great experience. It's something that will continue even if Dane wasn't here. We're going to continue this just because it's good, best practices for the village. So thank you, Dane, for your support.
Insurance.
I think it's exciting.
Is there any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Number five is a resolution establishing the refuse recycling and yard waste rates and Republic Services for the village, with Republic Services, for the Village of Bensonville effective January 1, 2020. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, any discussion? Evan?
This is just a scheduled increase with our contract with Republic Services. We have a four-year contract with Republic Services. Last year, we were able to negotiate no increase on that, so this is the first increase in two years, it's a 3% increase. It is in line with what the industry has seen. If you guys have seen, recycling has gotten very expensive for everybody. We're one of the few contracts that preserves that. A lot of towns are having to struggle with getting rid of recycling entirely. I know my hometown, Valparaiso, Indiana, is going to have to get rid of it. But our agreement with Republic is that it stays and this 3% will be in place. This equates to a 71%, sorry, 71 cent increase on the monthly garbage fee for residential customers, for our senior customers. That's an increase of only 60 cents.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and resolution has been approved. Under the police department, there's a resolution for automated external defibrillator purchase. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, this seemed pretty obvious. Is there any discussion?
Chief, do you want to give a brief overview of how we did this?
Sure. These are the AEDs that are carried in all the police cars. There's one in every public building in Bensonville, Public Works, this building here, the police department. We were notified that they're at their end of life, and next year, because they're so old, they won't be able to be certified to be used anymore. So we went out to bid, we got three competitive quotes, and we would be recommending AED professionals as the lowest responsible bidder. This would replace all the AEDs that the village has with the brand-new model. Put one in every village building. And there's rental units that the Public Works Department had. We would do away with those rental units and replace them with units that we own, which would be cheaper in the long run.
Additionally, as a new addition, we're going to add AEDs to the Public Works Supervisor vehicles so while they're out in the field, they'll be ready to respond. I want to hand it to Chief for identifying a line item in the, in our accounts that had some money sitting in there, so we'll be spending it from there. It will be reflected as coming out of my contingency budget that we have. We've talked about, I always tell you, if we're going to spend money out of the contingency budget, I'll tell you. But that's just because it wasn't, there wasn't a budget expense out of the line item that Chief identified. So this will be good going into twenty twenty and will keep us safe, our employees safe, as well as the public.
Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Trusty Carmona?
Yes.
Trusty Franz?
Yes.
Trusty Fry?
Yes.
Trusty Lomax?
Yes.
Trusty Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trusty Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Moving on to Public Works, is ordinance designating certain property as surplus and authorizing the disposal of that property. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, Joe, any discussion?
As we do routinely, when the village finds equipment, materials, and assets that we no longer need, we do declare those surplus and dispose of them properly. Tonight before you are three items, a two thousand three Taurus that was in our CED department that is no longer needed. Two thousand two Cushman, which is having some issues that we no longer need, as well as some pneumatic shoring that is kind of old and ancient and taking up space. So these three items we're anticipating will gauge somewhere around three thousand dollars worth of value at auction or scrap metal.
Any other questions?
Some real beauties, Joe.
Better than last year's semi truck that we found. No questions from the board, please call the roll.
Trusty Carmona?
Yes.
Trusty Franz?
Yes.
Trusty Fry?
Yes.
Trusty Lomax?
Yes.
Trusty Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trusty Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinances is passed. Number two is a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with RW Dunhaman Company of Addison, Illinois for emergency pavement patching contract in the not-to-exceed amount of forty-six thousand, five hundred nineteen dollars, eighty-five cents. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion, Joe?
Industrial Drive is a northern business district roadway. It's a dead-end street that is in dire need of some work. It's becoming impassable, becoming dangerous, and it's very unsafe for us to plow. We were hoping to try to get this done in-house this year, kind of ran out of some time. But it is in a condition that we feel is an emergency to get done before the winter comes. We did ask-
Winter's here, Joe.
Surprised.
Just saying.
We did ask two of our contractors to be paving for this year to provide proposals on this. They came within thirteen hundred dollars of each other. They were RW Dunhaman, who's currently working on our downtown project, as well as Schroder Asphalt, who did our resurfacing project this year. Dunhaman was actually anticipating to do this yesterday or today, but with the snow coming, we have pushed that off to Friday. So with the approval tonight, we will have this scheduled and done Friday of this week.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trusty Carmona?
Yes.
Trusty Franz?
Yes.
Trusty Fry?
Yes.
Trusty Lomax?
Yes.
Trusty Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trusty Perez?
Yes.
Motion carries and resolution is approved. Moving on to recreation, resolution approving an agreement between the Village of Bensonville and Mad Bomber Fireworks for the fireworks display on July fourth of twenty twenty in the not-to-exceed amount of forty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there a discussion?
Yeah, I'll take this one. So if anyone has turned on the news lately, you may have heard there's a tariff war going on with us in China. As we probably know, most of our fireworks come from China, so this, these are being tariffed now. To try to mitigate that expense, we think, we have negotiated a contract through S and G Thor, our special events consultant, to keep the pricing the same. That does come at a small cost to us. Our previous Fourth of July show was twenty-seven minutes. We're going to reduce that down by two minutes, down to twenty-five, to lock in the pricing that we had last year to keep pricing flat. And also, I do appreciate doing work with any fireworks company because they have insane names like Mad Bomber. So I'm asking you to approve a contract with Mad Bomber tonight.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Trusty Carmona?
Yes.
Trusty Franz?
Yes.
Trusty Fry?
Yes.
Trusty Lomax?
Yes.
Trusty Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trusty Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Moving on to presidential remarks, I didn't get any, but I do have a couple. For those of you in the audience, I'll be here after the meeting if you want to sit down and talk with me. I know my village manager's probably going to roll his eyes that I just said that.
I'm not rolling my eyes.
But just give me a few minutes to sign some bills and sign some checks and I'll be here. But I am going to hold Joe Karachi on the spot on something because he made an announcement to the seniors on Tuesday at the senior luncheon that tomorrow downtown will be complete. Are we still on schedule?
We had some snow that came in, so we are about a day and a half behind, but we will have it open for this weekend.
Okay, so everybody, this weekend it'll be open. Don't forget the tree lighting's coming up, December first. I know we got a couple more out there.
You're robbing me there.
I'm taking them. December first is our tree lighting, December second is our CP Rail. That's when the Holiday Train comes in. All right, I'll just do it all. Our Holiday Train, oh, here we, I gotta put my glasses on, hold on. So the CP Holiday Train will pull into Bensonville on Monday, December second. Festivities begin at three PM at Railroad Avenue just east of York Road. Parking will be available in our new downtown area and in the Metro Village Hall parking lot. The Holiday Train is nearly one thousand feet long with fourteen rail cars, each decorated with hundreds of thousands of technology-leading LED lights and holiday designs. The musical entertainment will feature Megan, Patrick, Tanika, Charles, and Kelly Prescott. The Canadian Pacific Railroad Holiday Train raises awareness for local hunger issues by encouraging attendees to bring a non-perishable food item for donation to a local food pantry. All donations will benefit the Bensonville Wooddale Food Pantry. For more information, please see our website. Just so everybody knows, if you didn't go to the Holiday Train last year, we had about eight hundred people show up. We brought in eight truckloads of food and CP Rail donated ten thousand dollars to the food pantry. So spread the word on this, we want more than that because they write the check on about how many people show up. So I know it's three o'clock in the afternoon and last year it was cold, but it's pretty cool to see. I'm just going to read all these.
Sure, man.
No, give it back to me, I'll have to, I'll have to hear it. That concludes my presidential comments.
Thank you, just some housekeeping items. Village Hall will be closed for Thanksgiving holiday, November twenty-eighth through the thirtieth. We are still collecting toys and coats for our annual toy and coat drive. There's donation boxes here at Village Hall. That's a huge event for us, it's probably one of our biggest days of giving, so we want everyone to participate. Please bring new toys. That's what kids want and we'll wrap them up and get them to the families that need them. The Holiday Ice Show and Skate with Santa will be held December fifteenth at one PM at The Edge. And lastly, we're asking everyone to nominate homes for a holiday decorating contest. We'll make that an announcement on December sixth.